Good afternoon. This is a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is January the 2nd of 2020. We welcome all of you and Happy New Year to all of you that are out there. First item that we have is roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Erasmo Villarreal.
Present.
José Tez, Carlos Flores, George Beckelhammer.
Present.
Raúl Ugaldi.
Present.
Johnny Arváez.
Present.
Abraham Lugo.
Present.
George Omigas.
Present.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have form.
Thank you. I did get a text from Commissioner Tez, and I know Commissioner Flores is out of town. We have motion to excuse him.
Second.
A motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next item that we have is the minutes of the meeting of December the 19th. Okay. What are the wishes of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of December 19th, 2019. Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is item 6A. Review and reconsideration of San Isidro Southwest Antler Crossing subdivision, master plan. The purpose of this reconsideration is to reconfigure phases. The intended is residential and commercial. This is 124.29 acre track, and it's located northeast of Interstate 35, Frontage Road, and south of San Isidro Parkway. The zoning for 533 lot development is R1A and B4. This track is located in District 6, and the proposed action is approved, subject to the following comments from planning and traffic safety and a notice to developer. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Happy New Year, first of all.
Happy New Year.
Ricardo Villarreal with Howell Engineering, representing the client for Antler Crossing. We concur with staff's comments on this master plan, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any.
All right. I do have Mr. Robert Roldeas from TaxOT who signed up to address this item. Can you come forward, please? Mr. Roldeas.
Robert Roldeas with the Tax Department of Transportation. And just want to show a layout. Okay. The second concern we have with the approval of this subdivision, right now, the tax that is doing the project that overpassed on Chilo, and he has also plans for the frontage roads, you know, that we will be developing adjacent to the main lanes on 35. This is the railroad crossing right north of Chilo, and we are actually going over, we have the main lanes, and then we have the frontage road. And basically, on design, you know, this is the right away, this green line you see right here, and then the blue is the proposed right away for this project. Now, we are doing the, starting the phase one, relating in June 2020, and they, in about a couple of months, will sell the right away acquisition for this, for this, for this second. This is part of the second phase, but we're already starting the right away acquisition.
It's going to impact some lots there.
Yes.
Okay. I think this is some new development that just came about, or is that correct?
Are you speaking to the, the right away acquisition from TaxOT? No, that's been in the, in the works for a while. The, what I believe TaxOT is asking here is that the, that their master plan be revised, not approved, but a revision that reflects the accuracy of this right away acquisition that's going to occur. Now, they're submitting right now for a, a master plan, not for, not for a plat.
Okay.
This has also been environmentally clear.
Okay. Let me call up Ricardo Villarreal. Is this something that you knew about, or?
Yes. Great start to the year, by the way. No, we have been meeting with TaxOT, actually. So this is about three months ago, we were approached by TaxOT on, TaxOT's trying to coordinate more with the city and the developers to kind of get an idea and let everybody know what's going on, which is great process. I got to commend everybody there. So they did approach us about three months ago, and they actually showed us what I will be showing here is just a preliminary schematic of, of the project. So now, I kind of cropped it just within our, our boundaries. So the, and Robert can correct me for, for anything. Give me a minute here, Robert, because they'll probably tag team questions off of this. But so the first part of the, the project is the main lanes will be, currently, the main lanes are going under the railroad. Main lanes are going to now be going over the railroad. So they're going to be, there's going to be, they're going to build some bridges on the main lane that'll go over the railroad. That's phase one for the project. Phase two is the frontage road is going to, there's going to be bridges to the frontage road to cross the railroad. So in phase one, if you're on the frontage, the existing frontage road, which is not going to be touched, you will continue north, continue north, and go onto San Isidro Parkway. In San Isidro Parkway, there's a turnaround. And let me see, probably better for me to open the, the master plan. So here's the, that way? No, I'm sorry. Correct. So the, the existing frontage road is here, and they're going to connect to San Isidro Parkway. You have to do a turnaround, come back south, and then you're going to go under the railroad tracks that are there, that, that, that part of the railroad tracks. You're going to go under I-35 and go south. So if you're on the frontage road in phase one, and you want to go to Loop 20, you have to be on the main lanes. You can't be on the frontage road. Phase two of the project is going to build the frontage road over the railroad track.
And I don't disagree with all that. My question to you is very simple.
Yes.
Engineer, Mr. Roldeas, indicated that part of your master plan, they needed that right away. So I guess the issue is your lots are going to be compromised?
Yes.
Are you willing to work with them to take care of that?
Well, we have been working on for the last three months.
All right.
We've been trading information back and forth. The information, our main, the key piece of information is the timeframe. So phase two is really what they're going to build with the extra right away. So the extra right away right now, and I wanted to make that clear, the extra right away that they're asking for right now is not for phase one, is not for the part that's being added.
And that's fine, but since this is a master plan, the indication is going to have to show on this master plan. So my question to you is, are you willing to revise your master plan to show this additional right away?
Right now, there isn't any tangible information by my client that states that right away will be taken. The only tangible is what we've discussed engineer to engineer, but my client hasn't received one letter for right away acquisition. There hasn't been a survey for the type. All the information we've received, engineered to superimpose into our master plan to say, if we're to abide by this line, where is it? Well, we'll give you information, but it's not finalized yet. We don't know where it's going to go. It could move, it could go here, it could go here. So three months ago, we're saying, okay, how fast are you coming? Because we're asking a question on, when are you going to get here? Because we're already here. So we're trying to coordinate something to where we're going by a plan, which, which is good, but we still don't know that fixed line. So that's super.
Rick, I understand. I guess my question to you is, like, right now, you've got a, a master plan before us right now, that they're indicating they need right away, and some of what you're showing is lots. And for us to go forth with something like that would be really problematic, you know, until we can get that issue resolved.
Well, my question is, if we get a right away acquisition letter right now, we can deal with that issue. But if our, if the timeframe you're giving me is, we don't know, it might be a year, it might be two years, it might be, you know, we know you're clear environmental, we have to proceed with development. My client has already, and it's proven, phase one's already on the ground. Phase two, which is just north of this, is in design right now. It already came through preliminary. This is going to be, well, phase three is in there tonight, later on, but that phase three really doesn't affect, this is phase four, which we're estimating phase four is probably, you're probably going to see phase four in the next 30, 45 days for preliminary. So while my client does extremely want to work with TaxOT, there's nothing concrete from TaxOT to come and say, yes, we need this exact right away. If we come and, this line is just as, it's just superimposed into a master plan. We don't have a survey, we don't have, my clients haven't been contacted.
Okay. Let me ask you this. The depth, what is the depth of those lots that you have on there where they're looking at that right away? Do you know?
At the top of my head, I believe those lots were 125 at that point.
And just by looking at a more or less line, they're looking like they're going to take, I don't know, 45, 50 feet?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, the TaxOT representative, shouldn't he answer some of these questions?
Well, I don't know the exact length of the, of the lot, but what I, what I can tell you is, we got this schematic already approved. I mean, that's one of the things we have to, to, had to get the environmental clearance, and we had to get the schematic approved before we can actually release official information. Now, we get that, and what I, what I got from our right away folks, you know, is, we're ready to start the acquisition, sending all these letters, and within two months, they will be doing all this, this negotiation.
Well, there we have it. So in two months, then, this becomes an official right away acquisition request.
All right. I guess, Rick, most of it is, from what I'm seeing here, and correct me if I'm wrong, is in phase four. Is that pretty much, or is it a little bit into phase one?
It's a little bit into phase one, right? It's a little bit into phase two, it's phase two, Mr. Chairman. It's a little bit into phase two, which we already have preliminary. I think phase two, we can adjust a little bit on, on that corner if need be, because it's main, it's very, very, very minimal. If, if this were to be adjusted on the master plan, so there's still, there's still some time on phase two, because that's under design. But under design meaning, current, it'll be going to one stop shop in probably two, three weeks.
So right now, what, if this master plan goes forth, your phase one is already?
It's built out.
Built out. Your next is phase two, that you're looking at bringing in. Is that correct?
So phase one, this phase one is built.
Right.
Phase two has preliminary plat approval.
Okay.
So it does take some, some lots into phase two.
Okay.
Phase three is this, so, I'm sorry, we did move the line on phase two. So yes, you're right, Mr. Chairman. So phase two does get impacted a lot more than.
So then, if, if we approve this master plan with a comment that it would be subject to TaxOT right away, would that allow you guys to work this thing out?
Not within the timeframe that my client has, because it's still, how, how do I say this, by sound entirely? We don't, it's, it's an unknown. And, and two months can be, three, when we met three months ago, we were told that it's coming, also, within a, a certain amount of time, and.
Well, what amount of time did they tell you three months ago? Or you're just saying very vague, or they said it'll be ready in 30 days? They're not delivering on deliverables, and that's different than just saying.
They were, I think when we met, I don't, I don't think, Robert, you might have not been at that meeting.
Well, no, I wasn't at that meeting, but when you all met, we were still finalizing details on the schematics and some of the drainage issues we had on the, on the, on the bridge, and also, we were getting the, waiting on the environmental approval, which we got now.
And so, so in two months, if we run this, we get a right away letter, a right of entry, first, to allow for a survey to go and survey. That takes time. Then we get the appraisals going, that takes time. And then the appraisal need to get approved if everything is in a perfect world, and the numbers are correct, which more than likely, there's probably not going to be an agreement on numbers, and there's going to be negotiations back and forth. By this point, our estimation is, phase two, you'll probably start construction, and the, the projected start of construction is in three months, four months, let's just say. Let's just go ahead in five months, in the projection, right? We're planning to have phase two approved, final plat approval coming in here in probably the next three months, final plat. That means, within that three months, another half a month to a month, we go to construction. That's for phase two, which is going to be impacted, like you said, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, 30 days, 60 days to my client is extremely critical, extremely critical, especially on a big investment like this. I'm pretty sure you all know that. If something were set in stone with a letter, coming in here and saying, hey, in, you know, 20 days, you're going to get a letter, or you're going to get appraisals, even then, my client might say, I mean, that process, once we get that letter, still takes, you know, months, even years. We've done projects along the old Cuatro Vientos Road for right away acquisition, that took years, you know? And they have to take right away, not only from us, but from San Isidro people down south, and as they go, there's still, we're not the only ones that will be affected based off of this, right, Robert? It'll be.
Yeah, there's only two properties being impacted. One is this one, and then the other one is on the north side by San Maten. We are working on the turning room and returning rates, which are going to be working.
Let me ask you a quick question right before. Who is responsible for the acquisition? Is it the state?
Yes, we are responsible to acquire the, the right away, and in cooperation, of course, with the county and the city, their, their.
Is it a portion to each one, right? So the city would behoove itself to reserve the right away?
Well, we'll have to start the process, you know, and, and Mr. Villarreal is right. We need to send a letter, you know, which, I wasn't aware, I thought that the letter had already been sent on this project. I'm going to check that tomorrow, why isn't it, we haven't actually delivered the letter. But once the letter gets received, you know, that we're starting the acquisition, we'll get the appraisal on board, and we'll start working the process with the right away.
We're, we're just worried about, we're going to be working on somebody else's timeline that we can't control. We can't stop development. It's a, and, and it happens all the time, the outer loop, per se. They have future right away, and it's going to be future right away development. And, and, and the right away will get acquired. That's going to get acquired, whether there's homes there or not. We've even discussed in those meetings.
Yeah, Rick, but the issue is very simple. I mean, obviously, you know, vacant land as opposed to developed land, it's, it's a hell of a difference, you know, in price, in acquisition.
Even vacant land versus?
You know, so I mean, those are kind of things, like, this is totally vacant right now, as opposed to when you go develop it, you know? Then those are issues that really impact budgets, city budgets, county budgets.
And you're, you're completely right.
And so what we're trying to do here is try to come up with something that works, I think, for everybody. But before we go further, I know you have a comment.
Yeah, so my question is, based on the line, is block three going to be compromised to where those lots are now no longer buildable? Or is it, is there enough buffer in between your right away line and where his line is ending? So I'm just trying to figure out where this right away, is it compromising pretty much all of block three?
Yeah, it's all this, are the lots, about 40, 40 lots.
It, preliminary, we've done it, like, we, we've done work. It's been three months since we've been going back and forth with TaxOT. So again, this isn't anything new. If they were to take right away there, and there were homes there, they would affect 40-something lots. Now, they're on pricing, on, on the pricing of it, I'm not an appraiser, I, I can't go there. However, if TaxOT does come and acquire a piece of pie, let's just say, and this was, has been said in the meeting, that's why it's, it's critical that it's got to be fair for the developer too. Even the, if we reserve a piece of land for TaxOT, and everything gets built out, when TaxOT comes, they see it as, hey, that's a strip of land that's unbuildable, you know, it's not worth what it should be worth, fair, fair market value. And so, not, not to say that that's not going to happen, we've looked at, leaving a reserve, we're looking at making those lots bigger, to make them 180s. The developer still loses, loses out, because minimum, he loses about 15 lots on this, on his development, if, if this line were, were, were to get adjusted. Now, that's not, right away is right away, it's still needed.
Well, I mean, I think we need to look at the big picture here, too. We need to look at the big picture that, you know, we have a lot of congestion going on, and all we're trying to do is, through the state and through everybody else, is try to figure out, you know, some good solutions to the long term. And, and that's really what this issue is all about right now. I mean, I understand your issue. I understand you have not received a letter from the state. Again, those are variables that are out of our control, and I wish that some of this would have kind of been cleared a little bit.
My name is Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I think that, I personally think that we should approve it the way it is right now, presented before us, because what we have, we have a, a development coming up, and we don't have anything in writing from TaxOT. So at, what are we going to do? Are we going to, are we going to stop something based on an assumption, when we have the developer right to move with the, with the, with a plat? And even this preliminary, I mean, it's a.
Well, I think we know what's coming, it's like Rick says, it's coming, the question is when? Well, that's a big issue.
The other thing, Chairman, that was discussed in the meeting, was redesign of the, of the frontage roads. So, because when we looked at it and we interpreted, so right now, the, and, and we've discussed it with their district design engineer, so it's not anything that is coming up here. So we're looking at this, and we're saying, if the 40 lots were here already, you would adjust that line so that you wouldn't need to take right away, right? Because there is room in between the main lanes and the, the future bridge, and then the future bridge and the existing frontage road, where you can squeeze those in and not have to take right away. Now, I'm not part of that design team, there might, I, I'm an engineer as well, there are certain things that I might, I don't see here that they might not know. However, there is also some type of design factors that you can adjust to that, and that's why they can't give us the exact port of where the line is. So it makes it tough on us to say, we need the right away, you know, we'd love to help, where is it? Well, I don't know yet. We'd like you to wait, but if you wait, you know, you might lose, and my client is paying interest on this very expensive piece of land, and he's like, I, I'm sorry, guys, I can't wait, I need to proceed. Now, if you have something tangible, then, you know, something, something maybe can come about this, but right now, it's a plan that could take a year, two years. Now, this second phase?
Let me ask Robert a real, let me ask Robert a real quick question. Robert, the, this project that is being talked about, what portion of it is funded? Or is it all funded?
Right now, what we got funded are the main lanes, you know, and the, the two bridges, you know, the two bridges in the middle. The second portion right now is under our development authority funded, that is, waiting for funding within the next five, 10 years.
Those are the additional lots that he's, that, that Rick is talking about, right?
Correct.
Okay. So there's no funding at this point yet for those?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
There is no, there is no funding, but that doesn't mean it might come in within the.
I agree. I mean, it just, it depends on what cycles. I mean, it could be two, three, four years, or whatever, five years.
Right now, what the state is doing is looking at all the projects, and not having the same mission we have in Loop 20, you know, what we're trying to acquire right away now, at little pieces, and we're trying to work advanced acquisition. Now that we've been approved, you know, by the, by the commissioners to do it on this project on 35, because we have to go get their approval, you know, for all of these projects. Now, going back to the documentation, you know, we, we, the developer might not have the letters, but the city did get letters since middle last year, you know, saying, hey.
The city got letters? Who got, was it the city manager, the city engineer, who got notified?
No, we had worked with the planning section and with, to, to, to get some letters to them to say, hey, you know, this is coming, the MPO. We had several meetings before, too, you know, to discuss this project.
All right. Does anybody in the commission have any questions for either one of them?
Well, I'll just, I said, I'm sorry, it all, yeah. I mean, with two weeks, buy us some clarity?
The state doesn't work that fast, I don't think.
We can, we can get the letter, I mean, if you need it, we're going to exchange, we're coming with this project to the developer, and we're, we're going to.
I mean, here's the issue that I see right now, that's why I asked on the funding. This project, he's almost ready to go ahead and, you know, get the design. The state at this point is telling us, this is what we're going to propose to do, yet our funding cycle could be two, three, four, five years away. It's kind of like, it's a tough issue. And at this point, you know, all I can do is send you a letter and say, yeah, well, we're going to propose that this is coming, we're going to do some acquisition in the future.
Commissioner, may I?
Yes.
I think at the least, if you offered TaxOT just those two weeks to see if they get something that's more than a, more than a maybe, and if they can't, then I, I think you're absolutely right. It's not fair to make the development.
Well, yeah, because it's not fair to the developer, I mean.
But in those two weeks, if they, if they were able to, knowing how, what's at stake here, if they were able to actually get something.
And that's where I was going to ask, I was going to ask Rick, you know, if he was willing to postpone this for two weeks, to see if the state can come up, and if they don't, obviously, it's.
But what is that going to, what is that going to do?
Well, it's not.
What is that, nothing, right? So if we approve the master plan now, what are the ramifications of this? You don't even know that's a set line, you don't know that line is going to be where you say it's going to be.
No, we already have a set line, pretty much, the accurate, how many acres we need.
Is it surveyed? According to the engineer, it hasn't been surveyed, so we don't know 100%.
The survey, I want to say we do have some survey from that area, because that, we develop the plans, I mean, we, we need to.
But I don't think the state has a sense of urgency, because they have nothing invested in it, to be able to speed up this process.
We, we had the plans, you know, to, to do, I mean, we, we're not at 100% to go to construction on that phase, but we have already the plans to go to construction.
So this development started last year, Rick? Because was it last year?
Yeah, the, the main lanes, the main lane project has been in the works.
Your project started last year.
Oh, yeah, mine has been.
Well, she already did phase one.
I'll, I'll tell you how fast it, December, how fast we're going. December of, what are we, I'm already forgetting, 2020. December of 2018, they bought the land, we're, pretty much, December 2019.
And why now is the state coming and saying, oh, now we need the acquisition of the lanes?
No, we, we have always known, this is, since this project, the initial Chilo project came out, this was back in 2014.
We should have done the lane before we started the project.
Yeah, the, the project has been there, the first we heard on the right away acquisition was three months ago.
It's going to be the same problem next year, and the phone, we need the funding, the funding, the funding, and here we go with the dead development, and, and less taxes for the city, right? Because every new home, big taxes to the city.
Yeah, well, and, and on the other side is, right now, the state is, is dealing, you know, with one single lot, that if, if we plan, you know, now we're going to have to do with 43 properties, that might require relocation of homes, and stuff like that. And then the city has to pay the portion on this relocation, I mean, they're just increasing the amount.
I think it's the same bureaucracy that stops development.
Robert, you have something to add?
Yes. If there was something from, and, and this is just in the spirit of trying, trying to do better cooperation, oftentimes, when you're looking at a road that was designed the way it was, or wasn't designed the way it should have been, you, you scratch your head and say, how did, how did whoever let this happen? And sometimes, because communication between different governments didn't happen, different local governments, this is, we're, something we're trying to correct, we're meeting with TaxOT more, we're having these regular discussions, that's something you're going to see more in the future. For this, knowing that this is something that's eventually going to happen, and TaxOT hopefully can clarify when, if you, if you allow them more time. What it will require from, from the applicant is that the applicant just redesign those lots, and yes, they will lose some of those lots, but they're being compensated for the land that we purchased from them by TaxOT. If that's something that is on their timeframe, I mean, you're, you're just moving down the lots and extending those, you're moving the street down and extending those lots, that's something, how long would it take you to turn that around in terms of design?
For this phase coming up?
Yeah.
The phase one was turned around in three months, was built in six.
For, for, to adjust, not the, not the entire phase, but just to adjust those lots?
It will take one half an hour.
Right.
To redesign, no, to redesign, yeah, the.
Just to redo the.
He's already got all the preliminary data for those lots, all he's going to do is move a lot.
Were you talking about redoing the line? Oh, I thought you meant phase three, I was like, no, not that.
My, my, my point is that, is that, that's as soon, that's the correction, that, that knowing that this is going to happen, knowing that these lots are going to be acquired. What's gonna happen is if you approve this master plan the way it is, Tech dot acquires these lots that don't get built because they know it's happening. Then they have to come back to the process.
I, I get you. It's a one parcel as opposed to 44 or 45 parcels. I, I, I get that. It makes it a lot easier for acquisition to just do one as opposed to 44, 45. I get that.
Those are the viability of the project. You know, once you, once we present this project to the commissioners and us, then we tell them, this is a right away process, 43 lots, this is the cost, this is the, the relocation. They might say, you know what? It's just too complicated. Let's put it back.
Well, this is, okay, but this is vacant land at this point. This is all vacant land right now. I mean, it, it depends on when the acquisition gets done.
And that, and that's what I'm saying. The acquisition will get done, like, uh, and I know it's tough. I, so I'm, uh, I'm not, now I'm gonna take out my engineering hat, but my tax first. I understand that point, right? I do get it. But at the end of the day is of, like rite of passage per se, right? My client invested so much money coming in here and trying to get it done as quickly as possible, trying to make it work with Tech dot and kinda saying, well, send me something guys. Give me something so I can, so I can work.
All right. Can we do this? Can we do this, Rick? And, and, and based on what Kirby said a little bit, can we buy two weeks so that you can get, if Tech dot doesn't come through with anything, you know, at that point in time, it's, you know, it'll save, I think, a lot of headaches for everybody in the future.
Can I say something on the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Um.
I've been trying to think how to, uh, so the last three, four months, in fact, our master plan has been approved for over a year. This Tech dot comment is not even on here.
Right.
I don't even know what the comment is. So coming in here and saying, are we gonna wait for a letter in two weeks from Tech dot saying officially, I'm gonna take this piece of land? I don't think Tech dot is gonna go out there on a limb and do that in two weeks. Tech dot doesn't do that. They, they, it, it, they're systematic, they're, they're more systematic than that. They go through a process, that process gets approved, then they do this. Once that gets approved, then they do this, then they do this, then they do this. And at the end, they're gonna give you a final product and say, here's what we're gonna take. So I, I guess, I, I don't, I don't wanna speak for Tech dot, but I just find it hard that we're gonna get a letter saying, this is exactly what you're gonna take so you can adjust your master plan, go back to the city and get it approved. Because even if they do send us a letter and say, hey, we're coming, we're gonna take right away. I don't know how much it is yet, but we're gonna take some. I still can't work with that. Like I, it, it would need to be something finite to say, where do I put that line? Where do I, and, and that's something that's tough. Now, this phase that we're talking about here, we're replating this, but it's still staying as one big lot. Because that's the way we have to do it. When we come in, when we come in, it's still gonna be broken down into multiple lots.
Yeah.
So we're still gonna pick at it in the future.
There's still time, I guess.
Yes, we're still gonna pick at it in the future. This, now the master plan is just showing master plan. Now, there could be a potential of future right away that we have to deal with Tech dot. And I think that general statement that we see in most master plans with driveway permits, with this, you know, the potential of right away might have to be dealt with with Tech dot. And we're like, okay, well, we'll, we'll definitely do that. Um, but to show a finite piece of land, track lot that is a way for, that, that kind of gets omitted from our master plan, I think my client would probably have an issue with that.
Cause this is a master plan, like you said, you still gotta come back, you know, with, with the rest of the phases for, you know, design and stuff. So, yeah, I mean, we, we have noted that there is a potential acquisition coming. Uh, but again, this is not a final plan. At this point, it's just a master plan of what you're proposing to do. So that gives everybody a little bit of time to work, I think.
One of the options will be to reconfigure the phases, Mr. Chairman, and try to leave the, uh, the area.
Yeah, well, I thought of that too, but it's a master plan and to tell him to, no.
Well, yeah, need it, it's needed. It's not needed right now. At this point, it's not needed.
Right? Cause that's what I'm saying. It's a master plan and it's, it's still gonna have to come back, you know.
And, and, or do you, phase two, that's under design right now?
That's, that one has preliminary.
That has preliminary, that's going forward. I'm hoping to come pretty soon.
Right.
And so we, us back at the office, we still have to deal with that. We still have to go and say, hey, we wanna make sure, is this okay? Even the client's still working at it. Um, so we're still looking at it. Once we leave here, we're still gonna look at it. We can't, we can't avoid this.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but we just want this to proceed on our planning stages.
Okay. Any other questions for the engineers up there?
Well, just Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There's a lot of learning on the job. At least it is for me. Okay. Taxpayer, developer side, I'm very much pro-business. Um, I wish maybe Tech dot would have provided us some information before the meeting. That would have been very helpful. But I'll just ask again, very respectful to everybody, is, is two weeks worthless? Will not, will we, will we not get any further information? We'll get something. And is it, does that really injure the developer, a two week postponement? This has never come to us before. We've never tabled it or postponed it, correct? This, this commission has not voted on this.
On, on this, uh-
Yeah, to, to, to delay you. So he's saying too much. We're just saying, I'm, I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not speaking everybody, two weeks. Let's see if they come up with something that you've never seen before. Tech dot does seem to be planning a little bit better nowadays, looking forward instead of reacting, that we've talked about before for the planning department also.
And we're, we're still in the hopes also that they reconfigure it, that they find a way to maybe squeeze stuff in so that they don't have to take right away. And we've been in discussions with them too. Now, two, we're going back to your question, in two weeks, does it hinder us? Yes, it does. Um, because it, we don't, the city doesn't look at a project until we get preliminary. So we can be under design right now and have it ready to submit it to one stop shop. One stop shop won't take it because it hasn't gone through the, the, the gauntlet through planning and zoning. So even though we say the timeframe is two weeks, um, sometimes it could, it could, it could vary a lot more than just two weeks within the logistical part of the whole development process. So going back to, in my opinion, will we get something concrete from Tech dot? We might obtain a letter, an email that states future plans. Again, nothing finite, nothing-
No, no, not, not, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't mean that, you, I don't expect you to speak for Tech dot at all. I'm really saying, is it really that unreasonable for us to suggest that you wait two weeks to see if, if perhaps you're going to be quite surprised?
I'm, uh, I'm gonna make a comment real quick, Mr. Chairman, and I agree with you, Commissioner. Uh, but again, we, we go to the basics. We don't have anything from Tech dot. I mean, this is a presentation or a comment that was not even on the agenda. And I, I personally feel we should approve it and then, and then look at it, uh, once they come back with the, with, with a letter that we have something, uh, in writing that is not affecting the developer, then we can make a choice and make, make, make a ruling as to what's gonna proceed with the other phases. It's up to, I think it's up to the developer and Tech dot to figure that out. When it came right before us, it was already, uh, the approval is, is from, uh, from, from staff. So either we approve it or we tabled it. And that has to, to be approved by, by Mr. Villarreal if he wants to table it. Otherwise, if we turn it down, I mean, I think it's something that we're doing it based on an assumption.
And, and this is a revision to the master plan.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the, the master plan's already approved, so we gotta put that out there.
Yeah.
The master plan's already approved.
Yeah.
This is just a revision on a phase that we're doing over here that's not affecting this because we need to come in and, and revise it. Revise, uh, phase numbers, phases. Now, again, I, I do wanna make it, 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 obviously we want this project to work and we want our project to work. It's just, does it all fall into place at once? At the current time, no. Not to say that it can't happen in a couple of months when we come in with a fourth phase. It might. Um, it might not. But that time, that buffer zone, we still have, um, to, to, to kinda discuss. So I guess that's my, I don't know if anybody else has anything to add.
Yes.
Well, just, just after reviewing this a little more with, with, uh, Mr. Vidalri, the real issue is when permits get pulled. That's when something gets entitled and it changes the assessment of the property. Um, you know, when an assessor looks at something, looks at property, the difference between vacant land and something that is gonna be developed like this isn't necessarily a, a master plan that doesn't hold a lot of weight. It's, it's when something's entitled, they have permits and they could build it. Now, obviously, the value of a property in many ways is determined by this board right here. What the planning commission says can and can't go somewhere is what creates value for property. And you, you have the ability to make decisions on this and are supposed to make this decision with the best information possible. Now, the challenge here is that, yes, this is just a revision to a master plan, but it should include the latest information. And the information that, that the applicant has is that this land will be acquired at some time in the future. But as to his own point, yes, he understands, he said it's gonna be acquired. The question here is when. So I still think it'd be prudent to at least give, uh, Tech dot to table, give them one, you know, two weeks worth of tabling. Ultimately, the decision's yours to see if they can provide something more concrete. But this is not the time when the decision will be made for how this design actually gets put into place and when permitting, permitting occurs. That will be when final approval comes in at a later date. That really will be the moment when planning commission will, will decide whether or not that you consider that Tech dot is designing a road here and those will not be buildable lots.
Here's no comment like that. I do wanna add a comment for Commissioner Eckelheimer, just to get a, to, just to give you a, um, got a, this is, wrong one. This is, uh, this is a master plan, but within this master plan, in the preliminary plat stage, this is a preliminary plat that's gonna be approved. And so this lot right here, when, the replat that's coming in is for an area basically that's gonna be affected here, a reconfiguration. This is still gonna stay as one big lot and we're not, and so to follow the master plan, I have to come and replat this lot.
Yeah.
Into the individual lots, which I estimate that to be way more than two weeks. I think it's gonna be more than two. It might be 30 days from now. Um, I would hope it two weeks, but I, I'm, I'm almost positive it's not the next one. It's probably 30 days at the quickest. At that point, we're gonna be back in the same issue and that gives Tech dot 30 days for the area that's actually gonna be affected.
Yeah.
The actual-
Yeah.
Spot that's gonna be affected.
Okay.
It doesn't, the, the one thing it doesn't include, and I have to say, I ha, I do have to say, it doesn't include the other phase, the, the second phase. That's already approved, preliminary.
Okay. Any other questions for the engineers? Thank you all very much. All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to the following comments.
I'll move second.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, just before, could we be made privy to the, this, the letter if ever comes up, or when it comes up from Tech dot? Is that something we can request?
I guess the, uh, planning department can advise us when that, or that happens. It's basically, it's, it's Tech dot to, the city's already been put on notice that Tech dot is in the process of acquiring. But it's, now it's Tech dot to the property owner.
Certainly. But since there's this doubt about the efficiency of Tech dot, which I don't-
Well, I, I don't see why not. I mean, because normally Tech dot will also advise the city that this is what's gonna happen.
Well, that way we start to see if they do, if they can move this quickly.
Well, like I said, I mean, the issue is funding. They can issue an letter of notice to acquire, but if the funding is not in place, you know, it's just telling the city, everybody's been put on notice, but without any money.
But those two roads that they, that he indicated, funding was in place already? Isn't, that's not part of it?
But that's not part of this.
Well, it's not.
This doesn't have any funding attached to it.
Okay, yeah.
That's the issue right now.
Before, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have the biggest cues. Uh, I, I have a conference that's-
Okay, very good. All right. Moving right along, sorry. Item 6B. Review and consideration of Emerald Park Industrial Subdivision Master Plan. The intent is residential and commercial. The site is 1,225 acre tract located south of FM 1472, uh, Mines Road and south of a Pico Road. The zoning for this 41 lot development is AG R1A and portions, and the portion is not zoned as it is located outside the corporate city limits. All right. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning and a notice to developer. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, Wayne Nance, reporter of engineering. We agree with all of city comments.
Okay. Now, I do have Robert Roliga signed up to address item 6B. Tech dot?
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject though, pardon me, if I may interject, we did, the, uh, the consultant did provide an update and it's on here.
Okay.
And that's tied to, uh, staff comment number five, which would be eliminated at this time based on, on this update.
On this new layout.
On this new layout, yes.
So then everything, you're good?
We're, we're good with everything except, uh, striking or removing, uh, staff comment number five, which was on the-
Provide layout for phase four.
Whether it stays or goes, I mean, if they've got a drive.
We got a drive.
It was, uh, this is the layout. It's different than what you're, but-
He doesn't know, right, anything?
Which is gonna do then the, the, the access, yeah, transport, yeah, maybe one. Okay.
I think we've, we've got, we've got a summary. Pretty much the concern for Tech dot right now is how you know this access into 1472. You know, uh, we don't, we don't wanna, uh, we've seen a lot of development going on on 1472. Same thing, you know, um, access control, you see, you see the connection right here on the, how to point with.
Robert?
Yeah.
May I let you know, and I'm gonna speak to you and to the commission here, just to let you know, we did go before we even submitted to the city. We went to meet with Tech dot. We met with Rafael Guzman, uh, the assistants, the, uh, their engineers, three of their engineers. We presented this master plan to them. They made clear what they want from us. They're gonna wanna traffic study. They're gonna wanna excel, decell lanes. They, they made very clear what they're gonna expect from us. We, we were fine with that. Uh, we showed them exactly where we're gonna punch through. And they said, thank you very much and just sent us the report whenever it gets there. So, uh, this is not something that, a comment that we're just agreeing with, you know.
You've been working on it.
Throw it out there. Yeah, we're, we're on top of it and, uh, we're gonna do whatever we have to do. And that, as a matter of fact, I think that we're addressing that. Uh, look at item number four, coordinate driveway, no, no, coordinate the design of the intersection of the proposed verity road at, at Mines Road with Tech dot. And I'm saying, okay, I'm going through. So, I mean, we're not ignoring it. It's, it's right there.
You, uh, I said here with a, a traffic department to, uh, so I take it that, uh, Mr. McGee is also in agreement with this?
No, sir.
Oh my God. Okay.
David, Danny McGee Traffic Director. Um, this, uh, project is, goes back quite a bit. It is, uh, it is really not a good location. It's gonna be very challenging. I'm not saying it can't be done, but I would suggest that rather than approving a master plan right now, that it be dictated by what the traffic impact analysis dictates. In other words, just because there's a crossover at that particular point, there's very, very bad, uh, sight distance problems out there. So those need to be addressed first through a traffic impact analysis. In this case, I'll be piggybacking off of Tech dot since we're working on our TIA ordinance. But I would say rather than have, putting the cart before the horse, is have the TIA dictate where it's gonna be. Cause you have a, a big subdivision on the other side that's gonna, uh, be using that same traffic, traffic light if that's what they wanted. Now, Tech dot may have agreed with it, but the traffic signal will be, uh, put by the city or traffic signals. Cause I know they're also gonna be looking at Pico Road and those, all those. And all those have, have very big challenges with the sight distance.
Okay.
We're agreeing with city comments. We're acknowledging what they're saying.
Okay.
And we will-
Abide based on what the, the study comes out.
Yeah. Tech dot already said we have to do a traffic study before we-
But whenever that study comes out, you will abide with whatever that study says.
You gotta do it.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Any other questions for the engineer? No? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve subject to the following comments. Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against?
I'm gonna abstain.
I'm abstaining. So it'll be, the eyes are one, two, three, four. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is preliminary consideration of the plat of the R and W Rant subdivision. Phase three, intent is residential. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning and, um, and notice to develop, oh, I'm sorry, and the traffic safety. Yes?
Joe, I'm a sheriff, sheriff engineering representing the client. Uh, we concur with staff comments.
Thank you. Any questions for the engineer? No? What are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve subject to the following comments.
A motion, we have a second.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. The next item is preliminary consideration of replat of lot 121 and lot 122 and lot 123, block three of Sunny Sea to Southwest. Um, the site is a 32.75 acre tract located south of Sunny Sea Drive and west of Springfield Avenue. The proposed action is approved subject to the following comments from planning, from, uh, traffic safety and a notice to developer.
Mr. Commissioner, for the record, we're representing the client. This is the phase that I was talking about earlier that's coming in. Um, we concur with all the staff comments. I have been in contact with traffic department where, uh, the concern of, uh, the roads being too close. being too close.
Right, right.
We are looking at it, currently, we're going to be discussing it before it goes to one-stop shop, what they, what they would like to see is that what we're going to submit, so, we'll, we'll be taking care of the traffic comments within.
You're good with the comments?
Within design.
Okay, all right, what are the wishes of the commission? Move that we approve with the attached comments, motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is preliminary consideration of the Plata Calady Industrial Park, phase four, the intent is industrial, the proposed action is approved, subject to the following comments from planning, and notice to developer.
Good evening, Arturo Arcepe, Power Consulting, for the applicant, and at this time, we'd like for you all to consider a table the item, their time is certain.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion to table?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is preliminary consideration of Moreno Mineales Plat, the intent is industrial, the 2.91 acre tract located south of FM 1472 Mines Road and east of Mineales Annex Road. The proposed action is approved, subject to the following comments from planning, engineering, and a notice to developers.
Again, Arturo Arcepe, Power Consulting, for the applicant, and we concur with items one, two, and three, five, six, seven, and eight, and just a clarification with item number four, with planning.
That is correct, the, we, we had, we had discussed with the engineer, and item four should read, dedicate right-of-way as needed for Los Mineales Annex Road, fortunately, that was not in there.
So you need that as needed?
Well.
For Mineales.
For, for Mineales Annex Road, tying back to the one before. You okay with that?
We concur with the item that's amended, same thing with the engineering item, wanted to, we concur with.
Okay.
Items as noted.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve, subject of comments, editing, planning comment number four, to be, to add, Mineales.
Annex Road.
Second, and the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is the final consideration.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion here, items 8A, 8B, 8C, and 8D.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Chairman, I want to make a motion to approve items 8A, 8B, 8C, and 8D.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, the next item we have is rectory report.
It's the new year, we are looking forward to making some changes, we've got a new building location, we are hoping to implement an online application system, a digital application submission system, we're adding new employees, and hopefully, really increasing the, the experience for, for customers when they come in, and being more customer friendly. We're sitting down tomorrow with Commissioner Lugo, he's going to give us his experience. If any of you have experience with the process of actually coming in and getting a permit and going through that, we're, not only to recall the radar, we change the rules, but we're also trying to listen to, what is the experience like for somebody that comes in